Let's call-
Well, we can get two other people first.
Oh, well.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Very good.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the approval of the agenda. Is there any questions or discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Cole?
I move or receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation on the following appointments. Sherri King to the ADA Commission, Randy Pilkington to the Telecommunications Board, Philip Nash to the Community Development Board, and Eric Donat to the ADA Commission.
Second.
We have a second. A motion and a second on that request. Is there any discussion with that?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
I move readjourn.
We have two motions to adjourn. I need a second.
I really want to adjourn. Second.
Okay. Now we have a motion and two seconds and two motions and anyway, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you. Mr. Schmidt? Let's call the Human Resources Committee to order Madam Clerk. Would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Motion to approve the agenda? Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And we'll take the one request we have today?
Mr. Chairperson, we have a request from the Director of Safety Services for authorization to start the process to create a civil service list for the position of property evidence technician and permission to appoint an individual from this list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this request. Is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Susie, do we have salary and benefit information someplace?
Not really sure. Was it not on the?
It's not attached. Can you send it to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that is a replacement for retirement?
It is.
Yep.
Any other questions? Are you still looking at?
I'll email it out. I don't have it.
Okay, alright. Hearing none. We need a roll call.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes. That motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay.
We have a motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Jones is absent, so Mr. Welper?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda and also the minutes, excuse me, amended agenda and also the minutes of October 26, 2015. And that amended item is a request from traffic front amount with shipping and handling not to exceed $3,500 for simple sign editing license and sync system.
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have one item of new business.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take that.
Thank you.
We have a request for officers Erie, Lippert, and Olman to go to the Defensive Tactics Research School, Johnston, Iowa, November 4, 2015, amount not to exceed $445. That says amended. I don't know, did we add a name or what did we do there that we've got amended?
I think the date changed. I can't remember what we changed.
Dan, do you know what changed? The date, the date changed.
Okay. Will we approve that item? I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That item passes and we have some pre-oths.
Isn't it amazing I get all these ones?
Got just a few, right?
If you want to split them up or something, we can do that.
Oh, that's fine. We can, we can get through it.
Okay.
Central- Central garage, the amount estimated plus shipping and handling, $9,702.07 plus $150 shipping and handling. That's for a wheel drive assembly sweeper 008. Clerk's office, amount estimated shipping and handling, $5,401. This is for the National League of Cities membership renewal, January 1st, 16 through 12/31/16. Culture and arts, amount estimated shipping and handling, $1,494.21. This is for the printing of an exhibition catalog to accompany an upcoming exhibition by an artist that I will not destroy his name.
Fergie Etcheverria.
Very good. Thank you. Fire, amount, an estimated shipping and handling, $10,500 for MSA carbon cylinders, SCBA's, whatever that stands for. Fire, amount and as- Yeah, what is that?
Self-contained breathing apparatus.
Oh, very good. One of those things. Fire, amount and estimated shipping and handling, $1,075 plus $37.63 for shipping and handling. That's for leather firefighting boots. Fire, amount and estimated shipping and handling, $4,423 plus $114 shipping and handling. Expenditures, material needed to repair first floor burn room in burn building. Materials included, insulation and panels. Laser services, amount and estimated shipping and handling, $7,800. Chemicals and fertilizer for turf maintained at the downtown area crew. Laser service amount and estimated, $4,279.70. That's for program t-shirts for youth basketball and indoor soccer. Laser services amount and estimated shipping and handling, $14,436. It's for chemicals and fertilizer for turf at city parks and ballparks. Laser services amount estimated shipping and handling, $57,257 for chemicals and fertilizer for turf management at the municipal golf courses. Laser services estimated, amount and estimated shipping and handling, $10,020. This is for advertising and advertising spot production to promote the Cedar Valley Sportsplex during Monday Night Football, college football, and various other programming. Safety committee, amount and estimated shipping and handling not to exceed $750. That's for safety fair expenditures, expenses, t-shirts for prizes for attendees. Sanitation, amount and estimated shipping and handling not to exceed $25,000 for additional yard waste carts. Street, amount and estimated shipping and handling, $2,750 plus $55 shipping and handling. That's for gas powered post driver. Traffic, amount and estimated shipping and handling not to exceed $3,500. Expenditure is simple sign editing license and sync system. And do we need to add the traffic on this one?
I think that's what you just read.
Yeah.
Okay.
We put it on there for you to read.
Okay.
Second those items.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I had a question for Mark on the yard waste carts. Is this, is this continuing replacement or is this just our usual allotment? What's this number for?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. This is, we weren't able to get all we needed in our initial purchase of catching up on the carts and so this will take care of any backlog we have, plus be ready for spring next year.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. Susie, what's the public purpose of the National League of Cities membership? Do they help us?
They do lobbying on behalf of all cities. They provide training for different city personnel.
I mean, we use, we use them. We've used them, their resources?
Yes. Absolutely.
Do they help us with the EPA issue? No.
So they lobby the federal government on our behalf?
Correct.
But they didn't help us, the EPA.
I don't think so because it wasn't, they lobby on behalf of all cities, so it's not on specific, but they do have resources available that city personnel use.
We did not approach them, Mr. Lind, though, to help us on the national, on the EPA situation.
Yeah, I know something to add.
Mr. Schmidt?
Madam Chair, just on a, on a different note, I didn't want to derail that conversation. Were you done with that? Because I'm certainly not commenting on that. I'd just like to thank the Finance Committee for approving recent travel, for three of us to go to ESO Conference in Austin, Texas. We had three of us that went and we went on different routes, different paths for the conference, and we were selected out of 1,300 users to become a beta test site. And I just sat in on a webinar today and we're going to be one of the newest customers to use the program. And why that's important to us is we're going to have input on how we're going to help them develop this new reporting system that we use for our electronic patient reporting. So I know we don't get report back on all your trial requests, but I'm saying thank you and that was money well spent, I believe.
Thank you, Pat. Anything else? All in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I move that we approve the Budget Line Item Amendment. Copy is on file in Ms. Sher's office. And I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order just a couple of minutes later. Please indulge us for that. But this is the regular scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. It's Monday, October, what is it? It's not October. It's November 2nd. Madam Clerk, would you start us with the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good. Thank you. If you would all stand me and those that are able, and please join me in a moment of silent prayer or reflection. We'd much appreciate it. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by our Mayor Pro Tim and Ward four councilperson, Quentin Hart. Mr. Hart, please.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart? I'd like to make a motion that we approve an amended, is that, that's just fine, yeah?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as proposed and also approve the minutes of October 26 regular session.
Second. Counsel, we have any questions or comments regarding either the agenda tonight or the minutes? Come last. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B4. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $3,796,952.48. 3,796,952.48.
Second. Thank you. Counsel, we have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call. Vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. And motion carries. Item number two, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion received, filed, proof of publication, and notice of public hearing, and as for the request by Lost Island Real Estate, LC, for a site plan amendment to the R4 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the development of a new residential subdivision generally located northwest of the intersection of East Shawless Road and Hess Road.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against the, the development at Shawless and Hess? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion and to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? Ms. Cole?
Mr. Mayor, um, down the hill from this area is Cedar Terrace and I know that that's a, the water issues are huge. I, could Mr. Anderson perhaps give us a little thumbnail sketch on?
I'm not sure if it's Noel or Eric, but-
Eric or Noel.
One of you on, on runoff from this subdivision? Or not? Has it been addressed? I'm assuming that-
Yes, I would just like some assurance.
Very close, Agent Junior. We don't have all the construction plans yet. This is just the zoning. We're working with the consultants on the project and we know that the lake and the dam there provides some detention. We haven't been able to determine yet with information from the consultants where that meets the current city policies or not, but we're working on that.
Okay, so when, when the construction plans, et cetera, et cetera, get developed, those will have to come back to counsel for approval. Also, this is just a rezoning on this one?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion received, filed, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended. City Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on certain property.
Second. Madam Clerk, please. That would be a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, that also is a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to consider and pass for the second and third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject quickly.
Yes, sir.
I think we, you might have slipped by some appointments in the consent agenda that you might want to touch on.
I did, and you're right. Why take you so long tonight?
I'm asleep with a switch, yeah.
You usually catch that right away. Particularly one two that I know is here is Eric. Matt, Eric.
Raise your hand. Has been the most recent appointment to the-
ADA Commission. So Eric, you'll join Bruce and you guys do a great job there. So welcome aboard and thank you for volunteering and stepping up and answering the call. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Very good. And let me check. Did, Mr. Schmidt, did I get him any, did I miss anybody else here?
Mr. Nash is here also, I believe. I don't see Mr. Pilkington.
Oh, okay. To Philip Nash. Philip, are you here?
Yeah.
Philip, stand up, would you please? Very good. Philip is a new appointment to the Community Development Board, which is also a very important board. And Philip, just, you know, we couldn't fund this joint without volunteers that step up and give up their time and of their talents on these boards and commissions, so we greatly appreciate it. We hope we have a great relationship with you going forward. So thank you very much for stepping up. And my apologies to both of you for overlooking the notification on that. I'm kind of getting back in the saddle after being gone a week and I'm not there yet. Mr. Schmidt, so thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Very good. Just let me, let me, we got Eric and we got Philip and the other two are reappointments, so we're good. Mr. Hart? Zoom, number three, please.
Do we need to do a motion received?
What's that?
Number six. Number three.
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a rezonal request by the City of Waterloo to rezon approximately .49 acres of land from R2 one and two family residence district and C2 commercial district to CP plan commercial district located at the northeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and Upton Avenue.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number three?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against? Craig, this is cutting out, I believe. I don't know if you can do anything or if I can, but is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against our item number three, rezoning that area at Ainsborough and Upton? Just a second. Oh, uh, yes, Forrest, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Forest Dilbu, 7025 Huntington Road. I just have one question. Will they be allowed off and on of Ainsborough or will they have their access off of the side street?
Well, there is no planned development there right now. What this change does is give us the opportunity, gives the city the opportunity and the council the opportunity to review any proposed business that goes in there. Right now, all we're doing is rezoning. We don't have a business that's looking at going there. So we don't know where the access will be because we don't know what kind of business might go there.
In the past, businesses have been refused access off of Ainsborough and that's even a worse place because it's right there by the top hill. Thank you.
Did I say that right, though, Noel? Is there, do you need to add anything to that?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, you're 100% correct, Mayor. We don't have a project to go there yet. I think the, the city ordinances would normally have them use the off-street instead of Ainsborough in, in corner instances like this, but we'll look at that when we get a project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Anytime I see something that comes off of Ainsborough or goes on to Ainsborough, it bothers me because at one time I tried to sell my property and because of being, increasing the traffic on Ainsborough, we, we got shot down. At the same time, now we have 300 people from the crossroads or whatever, wherever they're going to come from, they're going to go out to VGM. We've bought property on the south side of, of Highway 20 to get family dwellings and commercial property out there and yet we can go ahead and approve this. Doesn't that increase the traffic on Ainsborough? I think it does. And when I got shot down, it really irritated out of me.
Does everybody understand we're not putting any business out there? All we're doing is rezoning this piece of property so that the council has the authority to decide what goes on there. If we left it the way it is now, it's already zoned commercial. Any zone, any business could go there that wanted to and it's properly zoned. We're rezoning it so that council has purvey over what might go there in the future. Are there any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we-
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
No. I thought we were going to leave that one lot as a residential unit because the neighborhood went nuts when we were going to put that car dealership in there. And I thought you told us you were going to buy that extra land and then keep a residential lot as a buffer and then a commercial lot.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, that is correct. The, there's an attachment in the council communication that was sent out. There is an area that'll remain zoned, R2. So there's a, there's a portion of this is zoned, R2. There's a portion zoned, C2. We're rezoning that C2 to CP, but we're widening it a little bit to match the commercial to the south. Basically, we're lining up with that alley to the south. As you move south of Upton, there's businesses all on the west side of the alley. There's residential on the east side of the alley, so we're making this line match those.
So we'll have that, R2 buffer.
Yeah, it's an approximately, I think it's about 10,000 square feet, so it'll be a pretty nice lot for either a single family or two-family home.
Okay, thanks.
Further comments?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and also along with the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending number 5079 as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning Matt referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a rezon of certain property.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt ordinance.
Second. Very good. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
Move that we receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by Sand Martin Management, Inc., to rezon 3.77 acres from C2 commi- commercial district to C2 CZ conditional zoning commercial district to allow for a storage warehouse and related shipping activities located at 4107 Hammond Avenue and 1051 South Town Drive.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number four, the rezoning of a part of San Martin? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Chris Wenland, attorney for the applicant. I'm just making myself available in case any council members have questions on this request.
Very good, thanks, Chris. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before I move on with this? In the audience, either for or against the second time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing and along with oral comments and also along with the recommendation of approval for the Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission.
Second. Council, do you have any questions, comments? Item number four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rules.
Second. You missed one.
Oops. Okay. We need the ordinance.
Motion to receive.
Oh, motion to receive, file, consider for the first time and ordinance amending number 5079 as amended. City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4 approving a rezon of certain property.
Second. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
I will abstain because this is a VGM group project.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Abstain.
Very good, the motion carries. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement with Recreation Engineering and Planning of Boulder, Colorado in the amount of $245,865 paid for with Waterloo Development Corporation Gaming Funds for preliminary engineering and design in conjunction with the construction of the Whitewater Course on the Cedar River in downtown Waterloo.
Mr. Morrissey, why don't we stop with that one? I'm sorry, I didn't see that as being the first one because I'm sure there's going to be comments on that, so we'll pick up the rest of them later. I need a second on that, though, also.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. I see someone at the microphone, so please.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I've thought about this. I've seen very few cars in this town with kayaks on top. I've heard that story. That is a extreme amount of money for very, very few people. It is a hazard to a lot of people. And my limited experience in the trucking business from years ago, at that price of what they're charging just to look at it, to design it, most people could build it. And we seem to have all these projects that are half a million, a million dollars that affect probably a handful of people when we've got so many places we need to put the money. Thank you.
Sir, anyone else that would like to speak to the. Yeah, we have another comment.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I have to agree with what he was saying. The other thing that I don't understand is that nobody has given us any facts, figures, or what kind of income these other water parks we're referring to all the time are bringing to the city, bringing to, to improve the quality of life in this town. Again, I think last week I said, does a whitewater park, does a sportsplex, do any of these things actually become the first question when somebody's coming to this town to want to live? No, it's the taxes and the schools. So when we spend, and, and, and I'm saying we, but WDC, fine, but that's money coming from the casino that should be used somewhere else that will relieve our taxes, will, will improve a street somewhere or whatever, and we're going to spend it on a survey for a whitewater park? Understand, Mr. Mayor, that's one of your big key items. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Jim Jabba, 224 Birch. If I remember correctly, when the Gaming, Gaming Commission came in, I thought the money was supposed to be used for property tax relief, and I guess we're getting awful liberal how we use the money. It sure ain't going towards the property tax relief because I remember when it came in here, they said they were going to take the gambling proceeds and use it to lower our taxes, and that is not happening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don, I'm going to get to you, Don Miller. In a minute, I will, I will get to you.
Bruce W. Caser, 514 Second Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Bruce.
Okay, all these projects that we have right now going on to generate more interest in making Waterloo more better for everybody, you know, the needs. It reminds me back in the eighties when we thought the dog track was going to be our, our savior to help the city out of other problems. We had the dog track. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item right now? Mr. Miller? We did have one person call in today, our good friend, Don Miller, requesting extra time. So, Don, we can't give you your hour and a half, but we will give you five minutes.
Well, she was in favor.
Well, no, she wasn't in favor.
Don Miller, 707 Stone Quarry Road here in town. On this whitewater project, am I correct in assuming, in assuming that this was the consultant, was it Vanderwall? Was that in his program for this downtown?
Don, a kayak course has been in the downtown projections for a long time. I'm not sure if that originally came from Vanderwall or if it was just originally part of the downtown riverfront Renaissance program.
Has anyone submitted a prospectus or business, business plan or any other written communication to the council or the mayor? And in that writing, did they include anything about the reasons or reason for promoting this? What the advantages to the city and the residents and the taxpayers would be? Did they include participation in the report or indicate what revenue they figured to generate? And the means of funding maintenance and replacement costs? And maybe the most important, did they indicate why they chose this particular location?
I can't answer all of those questions, Don. Many of them will be answered with the completion of the, the item that's on the council agenda tonight if it's approved. Many of those questions will be answered.
Okay.
But the, the specific questions about revenue generation and stuff, no, we don't have that information.
Okay. I would consider that rather important to have a, a report on file so that I could, after things progress, look at it and see how it has panned out according to the projections that they had. And I think this should be a standard procedure. I have one other thing. As of about 1:12 this afternoon, the building commissioner, building department had not received any building plans or specifications for the Tech 2 project. And I had talked earlier this summer with a very high official and I was informed that the.
Well, does this have anything to do with the Whitewater Course, which you're speaking?
No, I switched gears on it.
Okay, can you, can you hold that thought until after the meeting? And you're, you're welcome to come up after the end of the meeting. Thank you very much. Add oral comments. Is there, are there further comments regarding the Whitewater Course, item number six? Yes, sir.
Kirk Henderson, 301 Frederick Avenue in Waterloo.
Thank you.
I didn't come here planning to say anything, but since all the other comments were negative, I thought I would come to say I'm here because I'm excited about the project and I think it'd be a wonderful asset.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, I appreciate it. Are there further comments from the audience regarding item number six? Counsel, do you have any comments before I add my two cents worth? Mr. Lin?
Eric, is that a PSA? That attachment that we got, it just looks like a price list. It's not really a professional service agreement, is it?
Oh, Eric Carson, yes, it is. It's, it lists out the scope of work and each of the items that they're going to do and how much each item is. So it's, it's the format that they use and as far as I know, it's acceptable.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Morrison?
I'm in favor of this, and I'm definitely going to vote yes. The only, only thing about this that concerned me was something that I talked about when we'd had a meeting before, and that is the removal. It looks like the, one of the designs includes a removal of the little dam. And I just still would hope that there would be some way to save that or use that in conjunction with the whitewater park, whitewater course park that's being planned as this amenity through a lot of work with WDC. So I hope that that design will include that and we don't destroy the little dam.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Morrissey. That's taken into consideration, and I'm not sure in the end whether it'll be saved as is or altered and kept or removed completely. I'm not sure where we are with that just yet. Anybody else from council like to comment at this point? Have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Do we have any indication of how well the Charles City Course is performing?
I'll, I'll address that in a minute, David, and maybe I can just do it all in one. You know, there are three. First of all, in answer to somebody, Mr. Chapman, I believe, pointed out that this was my project, and it is my project. Now, it's not my project, but I'm certainly pushing it, I certainly support it, I certainly hope the council does. The, the history of water parks is, it's exploding all over the place, and I would suggest that if you don't see cars going through our city in the summertime with kayaks on the top, you're really not getting out much or you're not watching because there's kayaks all over the place. The three parks that have been developed in the recent is El Cader, help me, Manchester and Charles City. We visited the one in Manchester this summer. I've talked to the ones in El Cader and Charles City. There are no direct revenue to the city off of this. You don't get charged to use this. It's an amenity that we offer. The, the benefit comes from, they're, they're just fabulous. They are used, the people in Manchester that we talked to directly couldn't, I mean, they were falling all over themselves. They couldn't say enough good things about the usage that they get. A lot of people don't necessarily go to go down the Whitewater Course. They go to sit on the sides and watch people or to have picnics, and the people downtown
Mr. Chapman, I believe, pointed out that this was my project, and it is my project. Now, it's not my project, but I'm certainly pushing it. I certainly support it. I certainly hope the council does. The history of water parks is, it's exploding all over the place. And I would suggest that if you don't see cars going through our city in the summertime with kayaks on the top, you're really not getting out much or you're not watching because there's kayaks all over the place. The three parks that have been developed in the recent is El Cader, help me, Manchester and Charles City. We've visited the one in Manchester this summer. I've talked to the ones in El Cader and Charles City. There are no direct revenue to the city off of this. You don't get charged to use this. It's an amenity that we offer. The benefit comes from, they're just fabulous. They are used, the people in Manchester that we talked to directly couldn't, I mean, they were falling all over themselves. They couldn't say enough good things about the usage that they get. A lot of people don't necessarily go to go down the Whitewater course. They go to sit on the sides and watch people or to have picnics. And the people downtown go down there to eat lunch. They couldn't say enough about the good things. Businesses have developed in downtown Manchester around this park because of this park. The three cities now market themselves as the northern Iowa, kind of a northern Iowa kayak course Whitewater park thing. We're excited that I believe that Cedar Falls will go forward with their plans to build a Whitewater park. And Waterloo, I hope, goes through with ours. And we will have then a circle, a circuit that people will come from, literally from across the country, like they do to play golf or to bicycle or to whatever. They can come to northeast Iowa. They can spend a week and stay in our hotels and eat our food. And they can kayak in five different locations in northeast Iowa. We think it'll be, I think it'll be a tremendous benefit and I think that that thought is shared by many. At any time, if council doesn't agree with that or agrees with the comments that have been made, they can vote no and they can stop this. I think it would be a mistake. I think our river is something that we should be proud of and we should take advantage of. And a river amenity will do that and will add a tremendous amount of quality of life issues to our city, I believe. Counsel, anything else? We're going to take a vote on this. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
I will abstain due to the fact that I own a building right at the end of the proposed trail.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Let's do seven, eight, and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
Seven is a resolution authorizing Mid-American Energy to install LED streetlights on the southwest corner of the 2600 block of Geraldine Road and West Airline Highway, the southeast corner of 2900 block of Geraldine Road and West Airline Highway, two curves in the 2700 and the curve in the 2800 blocks of Geraldine Road. Eight is a resolution authorizing Mid-American Energy to install 100 watt LED streetlights on wood poles in the alley that runs east and west between the 1,000 block of Lynn Street and Manson Street and the entrance exit drive of Hawkeye Community College parking lot and the 800 block of West Third Street. Nine is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., for the completion of an airfield pavement management study and analysis at the Waterloo Regional Airport in the amount of $99,800 and request approval for the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding seven, eight, or nine? Yes, sir?
David Dyer, 3145 West Forest Street. I see so many times we come up with, we have to do a management study or whatever at, in this case, $100,000. Couldn't that $100,000 be better put towards just getting the job done? They know that there's a problem out there. They know that there's a problem here or there, and we've got to spend money to have somebody analyze this? I know my driveway's bad. I've got to replace it. I know my this is bad. I've got to replace it. I know my furniture's bad. I've got to replace it. Why do we have to spend $100,000 to have these management studies? And this is not the first time this has come up. It consistently comes up where we have to do a management study and, you know, something, you get a professional contractor in there. He knows what to do. Let him go for it and spend that $100,000 toward his fee.
Thank you, sir. Item 10, excuse me. Are there further questions or comments from anyone regarding seven, eight, or nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Maybe Keith could talk a little bit how on that airport one, that it is different, I believe, because it is an airport and requires, has lots of rules around it, right?
Good evening, counsel. Keith Caspar, Airport Director. This is a long-delayed study that has been tasked with, the last study that we have on file is dated 2002. It's probably got 2000 or 2001 in data in it. Fast forward 12, 13 years later, our airport pavements are deteriorating. This is a study that will give us what's called a PCI index and a PCN number instead of the former weight-bearing strength that we've been associated with in this industry for many, many years. This will also give us, as an airport owner, the opportunity to look at our pavement index, to look at the cost of and estimating future rehabilitative costs. And so that when I get requests from aircraft operators regarding, what's your PCN number for taxiway Alpha or runway 1230, I can give them that number so that they can confidently operate their aircraft in this environment. So that's the reason for this study. I've been getting questions on this with regard to the FAA Kansas City Regional Office on the status of our PCI update. Also, too, is this is something that I've asked the Iowa DOT commissioners with regard to providing their support with regard to funding this kind of program as from their Office of Aviation, because the IDOT Office of Aviation provides these studies for general aviation-only airports, not commercial service. So it's been a long-delayed study that I'd like to have done.
Thanks, Keith. Does anybody have any questions of Keith?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Anybody have any more comments or questions regarding seven, eight, or nine? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. Those motions carry. Ten and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrison?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommend final acceptance of work performed by Altor for Incorporated of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for the completion of the RICE-NESHAP improvements to the emergency generator at Waterloo Regional Airport and recommend approval to proceed with pay estimate number one, pre-final, in the amount of $31,727.45 and pay estimate number two, the final including retainage, at $1,669.90. And number 11, a resolution approving professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Incorporated, for a mountain to exceed $42,000 in conjunction with the Waterloo sanitary sewer smoke testing, Southland Park and Ottoman Park, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding 10 or 11? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 12 is a motion received, filed and passed for the first time in ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by deleting subsection 247 Magnolia Parkway to section 551, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, and inserting in lieu thereof a new subsection 247 Magnolia Parkway to section 551, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, Magnolia Parkway, east side from Main Street to Downing Avenue and deleting the west side of the 700 block of Magnolia Parkway.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this change? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hert?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
She isn't present.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Forget I wasn't in a forum.
Your opening statement, please. Oh, no. That motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 13, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrison?
I'd like to make a motion-
Wait a minute. Clerk's pointing at me. Did we forget something?
Keith, I just want to clarify, that's a total project cost of $850,000, correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. We have a typo in there, so when you read it, it's not a total project increase, it's a total project cost.
That's correct.
It's a big typo.
Okay. Thanks, Keith. Appreciate it. Item number 13, please. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number two for an increase of $3,410 and change order three for an increase of $440 for the lighting phase of taxiway Alpha rehab project at the Waterloo Regional Airport for a total project cost of $850,486.50 and authorize the Director of Aviation to proceed with said work.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. So if there is anyone that would like to address the mayor or the council, now is the time to do so. Please come to the microphone and please limit your comments to three minutes. Give us your name and address.
Duane Aylerz, Waterloo Bishop Street. I took Mr. Hert with me the other day and showed him 100 violations in the city here. The city also owns, what, 200 homes that are falling down, collapsing, and they're not doing nothing with. Yet they come down to my property there, 1708 Lafayette, give my renters a ticket for parking on gravel. Yet next door, the property next door to us, the guy's got two trucks or a car and a truck, no license plates on them, the grass is this high. Susan doesn't give them a ticket, but comes right back over here, gives my son a ticket for a two-wheel trailer that the license plate was too much delinquent. Go on the other side of me, the same guy owns all the semis and trailers. There's five trailers over there, no license plates on them. She doesn't give them a ticket. The same guy built three garages on a single lot right next to me. I thought you couldn't build garages on a vacant lot. And I brought this up time and time again, and I brought it up over there at the office over there. How come nothing's done? Who's he paying underneath the table to get away with all this stuff for years? He's paying somebody and somebody's covering it up. And I brought it up before. Why are you on me and not everybody else? And I proved to him what was going on all over this city. And if you're going to give violation tickets, you've got 2,000 violations in this city, and I can bring you a list of a lot of them. And yet Susan comes down and rides me on every property I own, and I showed it to him. She should be fired. And who's going to cover it up? Same way with Youngblood that came to my home on the electrician over there, broke into my home, and I brought it up to you. You covered it up. Nothing was investigated about Youngblood breaking into my home there. An illegal inspection on a private home. Then he turns around, does the electrical inspection, and says there's something wrong with it. We're not going to turn it on. I hired Kearns Electric. He told you, there's nothing matter with this house. You wouldn't turn it on. You said hire another electrician. I hired another electrician. You covered it up again. There's nothing wrong with this. Finally, this gentleman right back here goes out there and he says, there's nothing the matter with this. Turn it on. You've been covering it up for four years. Then, a month ago, I stepped outside and talked to Larry Smith about this baloney stuff. And you walked by and what, a month later, you fire Larry Smith? What's the cover up? You're covering up all this baloney and you're riding me. Why? When the neighbors right next to me got multiple violations and nothing's done. You had a meeting with Susie and the inspector and nothing was done.
Thanks, Mr. Aylerz. Appreciate it. You're remembering a lot more than I said and did than I do.
I got it right here on the phone. You left messages on my phone. I got it right here.
Thank you, Mr. Aylerz. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the mayor or council tonight?
Bruce Stevickazar, 114 East Second Street, Waterloo. I take this opportunity to officially welcome Eric Donah to the IDA Compliance Commission. He's a very interesting young man. He's got a lot of energy, a lot of good ideas, and I look forward to working with him again.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you very much. Don, I'll let you finish, too. I'm sorry, I forgot about, that you have some leftover stuff. Yes, sir, go ahead.
David Dyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Been down to the recycle center, as usual, and I noticed this, I think I brought this up a couple meetings ago, but why do we have to have such a huge chain link fence down there protecting a public disposal site? Anybody with an answer?
I don't have a clue, Mr. Dyer.
There's this, what, eight-foot tall chain link fence down there now?
You want a four-feet fence instead of an eight-feet fence? I'm not sure what-
I don't know what was wrong with the fence that was there. Why do we have to put this huge fence up there? Because were there that many people disposing improperly of stuff when it's a public disposal site?
Boy, I would think that you would appreciate us being able to keep people out and illegally dumping, but I'm sorry, I don't know why there's a huge fence.
Okay. And what was the cost of that fence?
Don't know.
And who authorized the cost of that fence? What's going to happen manpower-wise when we get high water there and it comes up against that fence and there's all kinds of debris blocking the fence? So we're going to have to use city manpower, which I have, you know I'm about city manpower. Having to go down there and clean this out, or is the little guard that's down there, which I didn't see him today, by the way, going to go out there and take something to get this debris away? You know, and again, I don't see a grinder and I don't see the sifter this time. So I would like an answer on how much it cost, why we needed it, and who authorized it. And I'll ask that at next council meeting, expecting an answer.
Well, you could get the answer if you'd like. If you, again, you know, I say this-
I'll expect an answer next council meeting. Thank you.
And you can get it anytime you'd like if you'd come down and-
No, I want it on public TV. Thank you, mayor.
All right. Mark, I guess if you'd find out how much that, I'm not sure what he's talking about, but if there's a fence down there and it's new, tell me how much it cost. Do you know now how much it cost?
I do. I'll have a ready card.
Very good. Thanks. Yes, sir?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. This, we're coming to the end of an era, I guess we'll say, with the possibility of, if the citizens of Waterloo are happy with what's going on, let's keep going. If they're not happy-
John, let's not make political-
If you're going somewhere-
This is not a political deal. This is not. We can, we've got an opportunity to go. We've got great candidates. 5% of the operations is being run for 95% of the people, and we're running out of money. Thank you.
Don Miller, you have, you wanted to address something else. Would you like to come up and finish your comments? And your hour and a half was cut down to three minutes, okay?
I had a couple minutes left. I'm going to go to the bathroom. Okay. Like I was starting to say, the building department hasn't received a blueprint or specifications for the Tech Two program as of a little after 1 o'clock today. And I remember this early summer, I talked to a very prominent high official in this administration and was wondering what was happening. And he assured me that the developer had assured him that by August, or by October 1st, this project was going to take off. And as I remember, this admirable, high-ranking, and dare I say, lovable official-
You're talking about me or you're Don?
Well, if the thing fits. I mean, you know, I don't know, we may have some problems. But he had said he had so much faith in the developer that he would donate $10,000 to a charity of my choice if we were still in a holding pattern on the 2nd of November.
No, you're not talking about me. That's obvious.
So my question is, this thing has been going around in a circle, like chasing its Why are we in this holding pattern? And what's the latest word on the progress?
This is a saga that has been going on, Don, for, actually, Steve, what, six years?
It's been one.
It was the first meeting that I went to, and actually, I wasn't mayor yet. We were in a recount situation, and Steve and I both went down to the Quad Cities and met with the developer on this project six years ago, almost six years ago now. It has been an exercise in futility in a lot of areas, but the one thing that has remained constant is the primary contractor's commitment to Waterloo to make sure that this project goes through and that we see it through. There's been all kinds of ups and downs and of good times and bad and of small victories. So I won't make any kind of a time commitment to you, but we have gotten much, much closer. We've gotten commitments from hoteliers and restaurantees that are interested in the building. We think that we're through the financing portion for the most part. We are down to just some very final details in the whole tech works program, and we are very hopeful that we will see some items coming to council very soon, probably before the end of the year, that will then move the project to a start date sometime shortly after the first of the year. We're hopeful for that.
First of what year?
Well, we're hoping-
Next year. We're hoping next year. We all share your frustration and desire to get this project underway, Don, so we're hoping that it's soon.
Well, I only plan on living another 25 years.
Yeah.
So I would like to see that project-
So would I. So would I.
It'll be another really awesome, incredible, catalytic addition to downtown. So thank you.
Hi, Jerry Hagman, 3052 San Salvador Drive. Just two quick things. It wasn't brought up tonight, but I'm kind of in favor of the ban the box thing. I think anybody that messes up, in an ideal world, none of us do, but in talking to some former felons, it's nice to see somebody get a second chance. And then on the, on the river situation, I do believe it's a good idea. In an ideal world, we wouldn't have to spend any money on it, but I think once it's there and the river is nice to us level-wise, just like on the bike trails, we donate a lot of money to the trails. There may be some way to cash flow it with businesses, but we subsidize all our recreation in town here, really. Thank you.
Okay. Jerry, thank you. And those were both very nice, very positive comments, but I will remind everybody that, you know, the rules of participation on the front of the page say that you're only supposed to speak to one subject, so- Well, Jerry, thank you, though. I appreciate the positive and the kind comments very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor or council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrison?
I'd just like to add that people on the council and maybe out there in the audience are probably aware that ban the box, the first reading, the ordinance isn't on the agenda this year.
are probably aware that ban the box, the first reading of the ordinance isn't on the agenda this evening. And it was a decision made by Abraham Funchess, the director, to delay this a little while. But I, I, I hope that people understand that delay does not mean it's going to be forgotten because it will be brought back and hopefully positively and will be passed for the benefit of this targeted group of people that need to be reintegrated into our community.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Any other comments from council?
Motion to receive and follow all comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.